Ladies and gentlemen, this is the regular meeting of the council. The City of Southfield for Monday, April 23, 2012, now closed in Chicago.
Thank you. Mr. Skyler?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Fraser? Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Here.
Your six members present.
Thank you. Please join us, gentlemen, to address questions.
I am the President of the United States of America. I give the Republicans a warning stand. One nation, one house, in this world, there is no difference for all.
Before we get started, I want to take a moment to remind the members of the public who are here this evening that it is important that I am meeting these without any unnecessary instructions. So I'd ask that if you have a cell phone, they can turn it off. And if they're not using a lawful conference, it's time to take time to look for a document from the House of Council regarding an item on the agenda. The city council has informed me that any action at this local council meeting has been violated by the state law and the rules of the city. And the person who did all of this performance can be required to leave the meeting. So let me come up by saying that the council and mayor would appreciate everyone who is in Congress today tonight in allowing our business to be held in this situation. And we are, after all, here to conduct the business of the city. And in addition, if there are complaints regarding any issues, please do not mention the name of the staff person involved. First of all, we've got a presentation, a joint resolution in recognition of Southfield school boys basketball team classed in eighteen, two thousand and twelve.
Good evening. Before I start, I'd like to ask the head coach of Southfield Christian Basketball Team, would you please come up? And would the principal of...
Principal Martin Curry?
Please come up. Ladies and gentlemen, many of you know there was excitement recently in Lansing. Southfield Christian School Boys Basketball Team are now the 2011-2012 Season Class D State Champions. We take our sports seriously, and we are so proud of Southfield Christian Boys Basketball Team that the City Council and the mayor is presenting tonight a joint resolution in recognition. And if you would allow me to read it. Southfield Christian School, a ministry of Highland Park Baptist Church in Southfield, is a college-front, pre- through twelve educational community committed to pursuing excellence for the glory of God. And Southfield Christian first opened in nineteen seventy and has since grown to more than five hundred students currently enrolled in grades K through twelve, representing approximately forty cities and one hundred different churches from the tri-county area of metropolitan Detroit. In keeping with their tradition of excellence, Southfield Christian is a national exemplary school and is accredited by both North Central Association of Colleges and Schools and the Independent Schools Association of Central States. So much for the school as a certificate. Whereas the Southfield Christian Boys Basketball Team won its first Class D State Championship at the Breisler Center in East Lansing on March twenty-fourth, defeating Climax Scott, seventy-six to forty-four. Wow, what a victory. Whereas just two seasons ago, Southfield Christian was only one in nineteen. During the 2012 regular season, they went eighteen to two, fourteen and zero, which was the first in their conference. Southfield Christian was first out of one hundred and eighty teams and scored over ninety points in six games. Southfield Christian also tied a state record in a state championship, Class D game, hitting twelve three-point baskets. Two shots, damn it. Damn it. And going twelve for twenty-five. I'm gonna skip the names, but whereas the Bureau of Labor, Lee, the mayor, and the council of the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan do hereby recognize and congratulate, Southfield Christian Boys Basketball Team are winning their first Class D State Championship on March twenty-fourth, 2012. And they told me, one of them sent me an email and said, "This is the first of many," right? And we, the council, resolve that we, the mayor, and city council convey our collective -- collective congratulations to Southfield Christian Boys Basketball Team players, the coaches, and administrators are achieving a major accomplishment. And accolades to you for, not only for the students and the staff of Southfield, but also for the entire city of Southfield. So congratulations.
I think I have to... I think I have to talk to my daughter, because she's been behind us and really was the initiator of this resolution, so I'd like to have her come down here.
So, the coach or madam principal, who's gonna speak?
You are.
This way?
Yes.
On behalf of Southfield Christian School, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity and the recognition, and we're thankful for all you do in the community, and hopefully we will continue to represent Christ and our city well.
Any problems?
Yeah, we've got a basketball team.
Thank you. And the team, I'll give them a shirt, so we'll all give a shirt to wear as well. So you will introduce the young man, Courtney?
Okay, when I call your name, you can just step forward and acknowledge the crowd. This is Coach McCaffrey, our new letting trainer. Ms. Walden, our superintendent. Coach Hart. Coach John White. Terry Bender. Chris Dewberry. Al Richard. Rodney Hunter, the fourth. Jan Thomas. Christian Benson. Randy Hoppert. Lachey Eva. James Garner. Honey Beer. And Madam President.
Thank you. All the council, the county, the P U A. Thank you, Bob. My children graduated from Southfield Christian, so I've got to give them great, right? My graduation proud.
Okay, now, everyone, you guys look like a football team, boxing team, basketball team. You're everything. I bet if you try anything, you win.
Also, council, I want you to know that because they're celebrities, they were kind enough to give us a signed poster from the game, you know? We are really, this is gonna go on eBay, help the city financially. And also, I want all the members of the team to know that the copy of the resolution that we presented to your coach today will be copied, so each of you will have your own. And just know how proud we are of you. You carry the name of Southfield Christian. We know that your school teaches those fashions, but we're just proud of you as young men. And to keep doing great things. Sports is just one of your many talents, and it's gonna take you a long way, but your character and your ability to do great things is what's gonna make this world a different place. So thank you so much. Madam President. Yes. At this time, council, I would like to present to you two reappointments. You have before you the application or the request for reappointment, and I'd like to ask Mr. Jeff Griffin and Mr. Huntington to join me if they are here and attended. Thank you. Mr. Griffin's new term of service will run through June 2015. He served as a replacement for Mr. Robert Haitian, which you know less in the middle of his term. Mr. Huntington's new term of service will run through June 2015, and he has served since 2008. Would your approval? Request denied for your approval.
Madam Chair, I move the reappointment to the planning commission of Jeremy Griffin and Stephen Huntington.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Skyler, supported by Ms. Jordan. All in favor?
Aye.
So, it's Martin and Terry. Please. Do you advise or affirm the importance of the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State, the Southfield Christian Charter, and that you will be able to perform the duties of the planning commission, our members, and for the city of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to that tier of authority? I'd like to make an announcement for the audience who are at benefit of those who are here for the single lot special assessment item scheduled later on in the agenda, that if anyone of you who are here for that issue, if you have questions or concerns about items on the single lot special assessment, there are staff members available in the back of the council chamber to discuss the issue. So if you wish to address them, you can see them at the back, and you would not necessarily have to, or may not want to speak. So just want to let you know that those people are available at the back of the room for staff special, that kind of reservations. Next, we have minutes for the Committee of the Whole Meeting on March fifth and the regular meeting on March nineteenth. Ms. Jordan?
I'm the chair. I make the motion to approve the meeting of the whole being for March fifty-fourth, January eleventh, and March nineteenth. Board?
Motion, I'm adjourned, supported by Ms. McCaffrey. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion has carried. Next, we come to the conference agenda, and any items that the council wants to have removed from the item of the court of justice? So, if you can.
The chair, before you go, are these lights on?
Should be indicating green button.
Can you hear, can the audience hear?
They're not hearing.
We can hear, we can hear the chair.
And the low.
Cable was asking, they had to go up here.
They're showing on, and I guess what I said, we closely isn't turned on our internal volume.
We can only do what we can only do. We can't help. All right, I'm getting to the agenda, and I'm going to read, no one has given me a phone item. I'm going to read for the sake of the viewing public, the items on the agenda. Item A is a award赠 amount of $342,629 for a three-year period, less a re-admission from MDOT in the government transportation for the three-year period of $41,339. Just chooses to get June one, 2012, as the expiration of a current contract. This award provides the landscaping and maintenance of the center medias on northwestern highways, telegraph roads, and lots of roads. It represents a 1.28 percent decrease in cost from a previous contract. One of the revised credit services in the 2011-2012 public works budget and in capital accounts established for this purpose. Funding will be provided in subsequent year budgets as council may approve. Item C involves a planned total reconstruction of lots of roads between eleven mile and twelve mile road and the widening of lots of roads to provide the provision of a continuous left-turn lanes. Right-turn lanes will be added for southbound lots at Sudis and Elementary and southbound lots at Winchester. The total estimated cost of the project is $5.7 million. Federal funding in the amount of $4,250,000 will be provided. Of the result in $1,450,000 local match, Southfield will share in $184,151. Remaining local match will be provided by Oakland County and the Road Commission through a tri-party cost sharing agreement. Council authorization for the city to participate in this project on the arrangement of the request. Funding for the city's portion will be included in the 2012-2013 public works budget request. The project is anticipated to begin in June 2012 and be completed in November of 2012. Item D is council authorization to purchase thirty-seven body armor units from CMP distributors of Lansing, Michigan, in a amount to exceed a amount of $25,284. Funding is provided for this service in the 2011-2012 police department budget. Item E is approval of purchase of ammunition for police training and operations in the amount of $29,978, which totals at flat to last year's levels from CMP distributors of Lansing, Michigan. Funding is provided for this service in the 2011-2012 police department budget. Item F is approval of proposed offer of $175,500 for the sale of the Franklin Orchard condominium to the Christian Tabernacle Church of Southfield. The proposal was reviewed at the immediately preceding committee of the whole meeting this evening. Item G is the scheduling of public hearing on the community development philosophy and action plan for the May fourteenth, 2012 regular meeting of city council. Item H is authorization for the limited use of city property and the provision of incidental labor by city staff to facilitate the face-to-face exhibit activity as a youth and discussed at the immediately preceding committee of the whole meeting. Council?
Madam Chair?
Ms. McCaffrey?
I move the agenda as opposed to support.
Motion by Mr. McCaffrey, supported by Mr. Skyler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion has carried. Next, we come to the public hearing.
Sorry, I'd like to go back to item number H. Have you want to come?
Yes.
Have you chairs for us to use? Remind you, don't want to lose them. And we previously, regarding the face-to-face exhibit and the contract that we drawn, should we have something to do with the mirror contract that we talked about in our...
Through the chair, that is why we use the language that we did at the item, because the discussion and the requirements of the discussion will be binding on this relationship. So it will be a contract, it will be within the requirements that were established in the discussion of the meeting, proceeding this meeting.
But I would incorporate the terms that were discussed.
Thank you.
We come to public hearings, and I've already made the announcement, I'm a single lot special assessment role during the confirmation, but this is a public hearing, and I decide on the public hearing open, and whether you wish to address. First of all, I'm going to ask our assessor to give some information.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is David T. Duran, I'm the city assessor. And section one thirteen of the city code mandates the procedure for assessing costs of certain costs incurred by the city through assessment process. These costs are charged throughout the past year by various departments, and if they're not paid, they become a lien on the land and then placed on the tax bill via a single lot special assessment. In accordance with that code, the assessor shall prepare an assessment role covering all such costs, and council will therefore schedule a hearing of confirmation of the assessment role. Such assessments in all interest and charges they're on from state confirmation of the role be in remain of the property assessed. Therefore, my recommendation is that your honorable body conduct the public hearing and approve the attached resolution confirming the single lot special assessment role.
Thank you, then, to the chairman.
Can I have Ms. Jordan, my five minutes?
Madam Chair, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. I just wanted to impress upon the city to make some adjustments to this single lot special assessment. What appears to be happening via code enforcement is people are not being properly notified, first of all, when there is a concern about the violation. When people hear about these assessments, they've already been added on to their tax rule. I thought the process was the people were given a warning, told what the code enforcement violation was. Maybe they were given a second notice before there is such an assessment put on their tax rule. So it would be very nice if you could explain the process, and I do know that Mr. Gerald Wiskowski, after having a brief meeting with me, is in the process of making some necessary changes to code enforcement. But in lieu of that happening, can you explain the process? How many warnings? And when is it put on the tax rule? Thank you.
Through the chair, we'd be more than pleased to provide a report to the city council that outlines procedural statements that are involved, as well as maybe all the requirements should matter, has to be adjudicated. So we'll be glad to, we'll be glad to provide a report of that, here. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to state that we have all the notices that they have sent out, and they go as divided, and it follows the process, legal process, and is leading to the public hearing tonight.
Fred Bunker, two-four, two-zero-one, Gardner. I guess maybe I would have done my homework. I'm not sure the basis of the special assessment, is this directly with code enforcement? Or is it an overall group of special assessment? I guess I couldn't tell enough from the description to know what it's about.
If I can help you out, there are various assessments that are put on, mostly by code enforcement. They would include noxious weeds, they would be turned down in a couple of instances.
Some violations of the code.
False alarms.
Okay, okay. Okay, I just wasn't sure about it.
Anyone else who wishes to speak to issues public and individual, if you have any, and you have a staff basketball team, if there's any special concerns, that is your option. Name and address of the basketball team.
Carol Washington, one-eight, three-four-zero. New Jersey, Southfield, four-eight, zero-seven-five. My concern is that code enforcement comes around, cites a condition, and they correct the condition on the spot. Then they send the property owner a bill, thirty-five dollars for cutting the grass, and sixty-nine dollars administration fee, sixty-five dollars administration fee. I think it's very unfair the way they're doing things. It appears to me they would give you a notice. Now, my notices came, I was renovating property that I had bought, and I had all the permits and the windows. We had quite a bit of rain last year, so, I mean, they said I had dandelions. So they came, noticed the dandelions, called the people to cut the grass within an hour. Then, a week later, they sent me a bill, thirty-five dollars for cutting the grass, and sixty-five dollars administration fee. I think that's a gross injustice to a homeowner. It appears to me they would have given me notice that I was in violation and given me an opportunity to correct the problem. And they've been gracious enough to, you know, cancel the fee, but I hope we should be made aware of this process, that we have no choice. If they see dandelions or noxious weeds, and they need to be cut down, that they have the authority to do it and then charge you later, I don't think anybody knew that that was the law. You know, so I think some change... I had all the permits and the window, um, we had quite a bit of rain last year, so, I mean, they said I had dandelions. So they came, noticed the dandelions, called the people to cut the grass within an hour. Then, a week later, they sent me a bill, thirty-five dollars for cutting the grass and sixty-five dollars administration fee. I think that's a gross injustice to a homeowner. It appears to me that was giving me notice that I was in violation and giving me an opportunity to correct the problem. And they've been gracious enough to, you know, cancel, uh, the fees, but I, um, hopefully we should be made aware of this process, that we have no choice. If they see, uh, dandelions or noxious weeds and they need to be cut down, that they have the authority to do it and then charge you later, I don't think anybody knew that, that was the law. You know, so I think some changes need to be made, uh, made, we need to be informed. You know, homeowners, property owners need to be informed of, of, of the right things to do. And I just hope that, you know, this is taken into consideration and we're informed, better informed, of how these code enforcement works. Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, uh, Ms. Washington, uh, we agree with you. Uh, it is our goal, so if something happened in the notification process, we, we want to review your situation to find out, did something go wrong, or do, do we have a process problem? Because we, uh, we do have notification procedures, if they went wrong, we want to find out why, what have they been, because there are people moving in, uh, and if that, if that's where the ball got dropped, then, uh, we want to, you know, we want to do the right thing. So it's not our, it's not our goal to sneak up on anyone, that's for sure. So we, we agree with your input and, uh, uh, we will have Mr. Wiskowski, and I know he's had a chance to talk to you already, but, uh, he'll review his process, and we appreciate your input. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'd like to just crossfire one question. The city has provided one here in Congress, in general, and I would say we have to use the derogations to, 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 to,[774.12]
But I do understand it's touchy. Two years ago, when I was here, I asked about going to Home Depot because I had gone to Home Depot, and they were willing to publicize bulletins based on our code requirement. And actually offer on a city basis, if you can prove that you're a Southfield citizen, they were going to give coupons for fertilizer. So that could possibly, even though this is two years ago, it could possibly be a remedy.
Do you know, Mr. Schrempf, that they don't tell the citizens? It's our fault.
I've known the address, and we will take action tomorrow on that issue. Thank you.
Do you know that we should keep out special assessments, if they have one? No, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair. The Chair, I move the resolution on date April twenty-third, so, the date April twenty-third, two thousand twelve, around two hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
First of all, I want to close the public hearing.
And then you did.
Well, we started to talk. I want to add just a thousand.
I move the assessment at all.
I'm sorry, I...
Can you hear that there?
Pardon?
Can you not hear that there?
I can't hear.
It sounds like the campaign blew you.
Part of it is me.
Well, I don't know what's wrong with the mics, but we're talking loud, and we cut the mics right in here, so I don't know what's wrong with that.
Yeah, I was telling my motion.
All right.
I, well, I, yeah, we moved on from the, uh, public comments with a request for recognition. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, we're against, we're special assessments. This is strictly for special assessment public hearing. This is not the public comment period.
Well, the jury gave it. Public seven eight of your judgment. Now, Chair, let me repeat that, um, this session is closed, uh, special hearing is closed. I will be special assessment at all, uh, at the date of April twenty-third, for the round of two hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Motion, I need to recant it before I move to the other side. Please, Jordan.
I have a comment. I do agree with English in terms of the necessity of keeping the city looking as best to keep it in the name of it. I think every healthy person has a opinion of it, but, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Scherret, if we possibly discuss how we can give more notification, you know, through the legislature, uh, reducing that to a more, uh, rightful, uh, public that the legislature can't handle. Maybe we can explore the further communication to make sure that all the residents, you know, not just the new residents coming in, just come toward their code, uh, code enforcement.
I would suggest, part of our report to council on procedural safeguards, that we will concentrate on, uh, in particular, the noxious weeds origins and how to better communicate. Uh, we're not, uh, we are not interested in cutting lawns. Uh, we do it because of appearance issues, and we're also not interested in our residents having to incur additional costs. So we're, we're going, we will, we will review our processes and feed them up wherever possible, take advantage of whatever media, uh, there are to get out the message. We appreciate that, uh, suggestion, and we'll incorporate it in the report. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, I need to recant it before I move to the side, to confirm the full, uh, special assessment rule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion accepted. Next, we move to G P twelve thirty-six.
Can you hear me? Now, I'm looking at the noxious weeds figure, and I just counted up eight hundred pieces of property we'll find. Eight hundred pieces of property, eight hundred houses were not cut. Now, is there any way of getting to these people, all the city, citywide, informing them that they have to cut their grass and weeds and everything else, and their rubbish? This is a lot of houses, eight hundred houses we'll find. I think that's incredible. I think they should realize and cut their grass.
We'd agree if it were, if it were, um, eight houses, it'd be too many for us.
I counted eight hundred.
Some of those are, are due, uh, to the chair, to Mr. Lyons. Some of them are, uh, multiple violations, uh, and, uh, we do need to keep in mind, we have sixteen thousand residential, residential units, uh, single-family homes. So, uh, but again, we do have a commitment to review our procedures and to review our notification, and we'd be delighted if this list were nonexistent. If there were zero people, zero, zero residents on the list would be, would be, uh, our goal. That's, that's what we intend to, uh, look for, so that, and when folks have problems, you need to call code enforcement when they do get a violation. They think that it's not fair, you need to give code enforcement a call. We would like to provide the public, we have twenty-four hour, uh, hotline, uh, seven nine six I S, U I D S, and those messages are retrieved every single day, and we want to be reasonable and compassionate with, with our homeowners. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I'd like to also mention, uh, Mr. Scherret, that a lot of the, uh, bank owner, uh, proposer that, uh, we maintain, uh, so that the neighborhoods do have good coverage here. And, um, so when you talk about the numbers of, of prousers or bank owns or vacant homes, that we maintain on a, on a weekly basis, or monthly basis, uh, that's, that's a big number right now. And, um, and so it's not necessarily a person, a resident who's actually living in a house.
Through the chair, that's a good point, because our vacant homes coincidentally is about eight hundred. Uh, and the, the bank owns, uh, homes, we, we, it is our goal that no one driving down the street will know that a home is vacant. That means that we, the, the grass gets cut properly, not like hay. It looks good, it's edged and it's cut properly. And, uh, the, if, if the banks do not maintain their property, uh, they, they get sufficient notice, and then we go out and get the work done. We want the community looking good.
All right, let's move on to public hearing.
I would just like to tell, um, to, to just echo, um, what Mr. Scherret said with that, I was expecting to, I think we need to be more aggressive in teaching, uh, and talking about tips to eliminate dandelions and weeds from your yard. There are some people who, to me, struggle with the concept that they're going to have weeds, and you don't have to have them if you use certain gardening techniques. And I think to our neighborhood associations, um, presidents, and we do flower day, um, it's, it's a way that, you know, ask people to, to give out lawn, we have an amazing, um, public works section of our, of our city that, if you look at our, our landscaping, and we look at our gardens, who are extremely talented. So like you said, we have, we have, uh, Lowe's, and we have, um, Home Depot that can give out tips, and, and possibly we could put it on our website, and, and do some things, because weeds, you, nothing is more unattractive than to see yards with, with, with dandelion weeds. And you'll have people who will cut it every week, and they grow back overnight. And it seems like, uh, there is ways that you don't have to have it, and I think that's something we'll give them a ticket when they have it. But can we give them, we'll give them a ticket. You can eliminate weeds from your yard if you use certain fertilizers, or organic, or however you want to do it, but, uh, I think we need to do a little bit more than that. And that, and our standard, uh, I can't tell you, um, I'll talk about that again in my section, um, when I speak, but the community desires to have a manual to give when they get a new neighbor that comes to, and they're struggling, so that they can know what our ordinance is and our policy is. And that, that is extremely critical, and everyone else around here feels the same way. We have some very new residents, they're asking, you know, I'm a new resident, but I don't know what the code and ordinance is, I'm just wondering. Then maybe we can be, be proactive as, as we are reactive.
Through, through the chair, the mayor's raising the bar, which is always a good thing, uh, in terms of, of weeds and dandelions, but we do want folks to know that the violations are for noxious weeds, which, uh, are, uh, what is the height, I don't recall exactly what it is, the, the definition of noxious weeds.
It's, it's within the ordinance, it defines, and it gives examples of what is the weed, are noxious weeds. Not throw them at the main.
But, uh, but there was a height, there's a height reading, the height.
Oh, it's called, it's a height reading.
Well, yeah, it's, it's big weeds, major weeds.
Big weeds. So I understand, with the ticket, also that, that residents receive, we actually, and I know code enforcement measures, and it should be a certain height before you'll even get a ticket. And, uh, so, when we start getting our tickets, it's really at a point, it should be at a point where it's just totally unacceptable.
On, on what the mayor is suggesting, uh, I would also, um, note that we have a number of new residents, because we have a lot of turnover in our housing stock, uh, with a modest price of homes, we have people who are buying a home for the first time, um, and may not really know much about, uh, yard maintenance or, or outdoor stuff. Uh, I would suggest that we also, um, have, uh, perhaps some gardening or lawn maintenance classes on our TV channel, um, that we might use this medium to, uh, show folks, um, how to buy your yard for less than, you know, fifty dollars or something. Um, and I know that Lowe's, um, and Home Depot, I see them all the time, they, they host classes, they're usually on Saturday mornings, um, and they're on a whole range of, um, house improvement, yard improvement topics, um, and we partner, even promote those, those classes. They're, they're classes of free, you don't buy anything, um, but it, but it is a worthy chartering with one of our businesses.
All right, um, I'm going to move on to public hearing. Mr. Colas, can you answer that?
Good, Chair. Uh, next item is G P twelve thirty-six, that's P twelve eighty-five, special lease and site planning request, a new vision technology on behalf of the owner, Stevens Group Holdings, uh, Inc. For the destruction of a three standing ninety-nine foot conneccation tower. Property located at two one four seven two Bridge Street, on East Side Bridge Street, through Bridge Industrial Park. Were certain conditions that were, um, made as part of recommendation of planning permission and site planning review committee that have not been satisfied to date? Therefore, I am recommending the opponent of this public hearing for date certain June eighteen two thousand twelve.
June eighteen two thousand twelve?
Yes, June eighteen two thousand twelve, your regulations.
Everything is good. Yes, June eighteen, two thousand twenty.
I've moved a, a comment of, uh, G P one two three six, site plan on twelve eighty-five, to, uh, June eighteen two thousand twelve.
Support.
Motion, I need to side with, I need to mark, all in favor?
Aye.
All in support of the hearing.
Mr. Chair, it's a little late that we need to revisit setting a public hearing before a condition that we met, if it's just sort of, uh, liberalized that we can put certain items on our generally scheduled public hearings prior to completion of the schedule. Anything that needs to be done, or we're back to the schedule, I really want to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just saw, went ahead, and I'm just, uh, not a permit, not a name, uh, nothing. But they already know. Well, we're sure that it may not cost money.
Well, but it was already entered, that's why we should.
But I think we're clean today.
Yes. We are going to attend. Next, we come to the communications portion of, uh... All right, so we come to communications, so the next item. Uh, I have a request from Kelly Keiko. Keiko, I'm going to ask you to give your name and address of the public event, and from the time that you start, you will have five minutes.
Listen.
Something else.
My name's Kelly Keiko. I live at one seven zero Secundura Crescent Drive, Southfield, four eight four seven six. The problem, you know, I've been had, uh, we have tickets cars, I just, uh, make my driveway wider, spend almost ten thousand dollars, and, uh, we didn't have any tickets. Even I have, uh, garbage, uh, that's just for my driveway, but the one car in the, in the street, I got tickets. I don't know how those people go by, get a ticket, you don't see the driveway, but that just starts over there, they have a ticket. Well, they exist this ticket. We have another ticket, we flagged one foot from a sidewalk, and they said, "A handicap was by." I don't see any handicaps, was between the three and six o'clock in the morning, or between nine o'clock. Um, I think a neighbor was by us, you know, just like, uh, I don't, excuse me, like a chicken, they sleep early, I don't see nobody walk around, nobody. So, uh, I wonder, I wasn't dead, and can I have a permission, maybe? Uh, my house, last house, and this is, nobody goes by. I don't block nobody's way, we are not parking, and somebody, you know, can I leave one car in the street, maybe? Or, uh, so we need something, some help, you know? I talked to the people, the other, the one gave a ticket, and I said, "What I should do? Should I move from the, from the city?" She said, "Yeah, we don't care, go high school from the city." I don't care, other than, uh, my ticket, I have a little twenty-nine years in the city. Twenty-three in my house, five, three years in the apartment. And that lady tells me she don't care, I have to move, because I park one foot from the sidewalk, this is not right. That's it, thank you.
Uh, Council, I, I was lucky to, uh, when I wanted to make statements, that, um, requested cooperation, that we allow all of these, um, people that are in the communication portion to speak first, and that, and there is in the back, if everyone's speaking, the council wants to ask questions, or just because you're, that you're holding, so, so, of all, of all of them speaking, and I will give Mr. The Administrator the opportunity first to, uh, maybe come and connect me at my desk, to some of these questions, so, uh, who was cooperating with that, that question. Next, we have a request for, I need to, Mr. Gerald Mullins. Mr. Mullins, you know Gerald, five minutes, in the distance, I'm not good.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullins.
Sorry, excuse me, I'm Gerard.
Sorry.
Apologize. I have it in my mind, but...
I understand.
Okay.
I believe, since nineteen sixty-eight, I have lived at seventeen eight eighty Louis Street, just one small, one only, from Milwaukee Mecca, Lake Village, and since nineteen sixty-one, I worked in the city of Sidewalk Hill, Southwood. Tonight, I'm not here to talk about those nice guys at Denso. Instead, I'm here tonight to recommend to council two ways that the city can save money in this tough economy. Both recommendations have to do with the water and sewer department. My first recommendation is that the water department eliminate the extra enclosed return envelopes that arrive with the water bills, which are mailed out to the residents for accounts right by that have electronic debit. This generates needlessly an extra cost to the city, and contributes needlessly to the bill, to the culling of additional trees. After all, Southfield is the proud recipient for the last twenty-five years of the Tree City USA Award that is given by the Proprietary Foundation. It is in that spirit alone that the city should stop sending out these unusable and wasteful envelopes, and a word that current water department's policy is dumb and should be discontinued. My second recommended recommendation is that the water department repair their leaky water gate valve at the northeast corner of Southfield Road and Louis Street. I reported this problem to the water department last November, and since then, it has been leaking at the rate of about a quarter of an open fire hydrant, the pool is own manhole cover and into two adjacent catch bases. This has to cost the city by now tens and tens of thousands of dollars. I know that this is not an emergency, and that the water and sewer department is currently backed up, but a response time of over five months seems unreasonable to me. I know those cities perfect, not even that miracle on Southfield Road, Lake Village, although I've heard that they have a terrific EMS and fire department, but I believe that Councilman Fraser knows a hell of a lot more about Lake's fire department than I do. Thank you, Madam President.
Next, request for recognition, Mr. Pamela Gerald.
Can you? My name is Pamela Gerald. As you well know, I am an independent voice for Southfield. I can be reached by mail at P O Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five, or by telephone at two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. I am honored and humbled by all of you who call me, stop me at the post office, gas stations, Meyer, Kroger's, Sam, at our library, city events, and city halls to tell me that you watch the council meetings. Thank you very much, and keep on watching, because you have a right to be informed. As a result of your positive feedback towards me and the information that I present, I am seriously considering running for Southfield City Council in twenty thirteen. The naysayers will say why now. My answer to that is, it's time for a change. I am proposing the following changes. One, city council be a non-salary and non-benefit position, which will give the city more money to strengthen public safety. Two, city council position should be term limited to provoke new ideas. Three, city council election should be done by wards for greater individual accountability. And finally, to alleviate some of these publication problems, all city legal notices should be published in the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident receives. I do not agree with the city administration asking our employees to take a pay cut and give concession, when we have city officials making six-figure incomes, getting free cars and free gas. Southfield should take a page out of L. Brooks Patterson's book, that is, Take a Pay Cut With Your Employees. My friend, Ms. Nadia Del Lamouni, for the past eleven years has organized to perfection the International Festival held here in Southfield in the month of October. The city administration, along with members of city council, received a letter from my friend, Ms. Nadia Del Lamouni, complaining about racist and discriminatory, discriminatory treatment she endured at the hands of Nimrod Roltenthal, our community relations director. Not only did he harass Ms. Nadia Del Lamouni, he was very verbally abusive, and this city never responded to my friend, Ms. Nadia Del Lamouni's letter, and all of you, I put a copy of the letter up there on the desk. Mr. Scherret is in charge of the day-to-day operations of this city, and he is designated to handle such a problem. Instead, for whatever reason, Council President Joan Seymour attempted to do a biased and racist investigation regarding this matter. Joan Seymour was very quick to place the blame on my friend, but she forgot to do one very important thing in an investigation, and that is to question the person that was subject to the abuse. To add insult to injury, Ms. Joan Seymour went to my friend's boss, Ms. Nadia Del Lamouni, and asked him to fire her. This city should be embarrassed with our employees' behavior, and I'll ask you a question, Ms. Seymour. Who do you and the city attorney work for? Don't answer me, answer the residents who are at the top of the organizational chart. At one time, our city relation, our city community relations director was in charge of business development, code enforcement, cable, and housing. When former employees Kathy Sherman, Linda Richelieu, and Ms. Linda Devillas, who I think still works here, filed a lawsuit against our community relations director, the city covered up the matter. You guys gave him a slap on the wrist, a six-month relaxation leave, and a mandatory attendance in anger management classes. The punishment does not match the offense, when some of his employees needed to seek, to seek psychological treatment behind the abuse. So I'll ask you a question. Is it possible to have an integrated city, united in peace and harmony, if our community relations director believes, and I'll quote, "People are interested in the quality of life." This is, of course, means the quantity of life in Southfield. Is that appropriate? And now, on a more positive note, I want to take my last few seconds and recognize some very important historical figures in the audience, two former Tuskegee Airmen, Major Dennis Mills and Major McCaffrey, and also the first black, or one of the first black paratroopers from Unit five five five, Parachute Infantry, Major Bob Tillman. So, I'd love to have them. And it would be very nice if council would shake their hand, because we do a lot of memorial and, uh, veterans, they think, thank you.
Your time is, uh... Just one reminder, you are misinformed, mostly misinformed. Uh, the next, uh, the next, um, class for, I need to, your government.
Okay, what's the new procedure? Am I supposed to say my name in the end now?
No, no, just, no, okay.
Stephanie English, two eight seven three five, San Carlos, Southfield, four eight zero seven six. Um, unfortunately, I'm going to have to be coming back to the podium. Um, I had mentioned to you guys several weeks ago that I felt that conversations with, uh, Mr. Scherret and our city attorneys, Sue Ward, had sufficed with the, uh, police chief, uh, allegation issue. Uh, they have resurfaced, and they've recropped up, and I've been asked by, uh, the certain police body to bring these issues. I'm going to try to request a confidential meeting again with, uh, Sue Ward and Mr. Scherret, if that's feasible. If not, I do need to bring them to the podium. Um, the reason I'm doing this, it's, um, a big chunk of my time, but I do believe that, uh, the integrity of our police department is truly critical, um, also to, when I'm measuring other cities, Romulus, Sterling Heights, the U.S. Secret Service, the Detroit Police Department that have all had irregularities or misbehaviors of their departments, that we have given full public disclosure and whatever message that were available, I would like to do a confidential, and I'm requesting that, and I will try to make those arrangements. Um, I do have one concern that came up that I do need to assess address, because it comes from a leadership level. The officer shared with me an issue pertaining to, um, Chief Ryan Gerald in terms of the... The officer shared with me an issue pertaining to Chief Ryan Gerald in terms of a resident being pushed aside when he has the right to appeal a weapons permit that was denied. I got this information, vetted it very heavily, and I don't need to throw anyone under the bus or anything like that, but I do need to share it. This particular issue, this police chief tried to get a subpoena, I guess for arrest or whatever the legal processes were, from our local court and also the open court. This request was turned out by both courts, and this gentleman, who had continued to contact our chief to appeal the decline or the denial of this weapons permit. The gentleman's calls evidently were not answered, and our chief decided that he did not want to be bothered with any more calls. And when the subpoenas were denied by both of those courts, he ordered one of the other chiefs, who was a lieutenant at the time, to arrest this gentleman at the CBS at eleven Mile Hand Loscher. However, since the number was traced, or however he knew that the gentleman was there, our lieutenant declined and refused this request, not once, I guess, but twice, and this lieutenant was given a reprimand that was in his permanent file. I'm sharing this story not to throw the lieutenant under the bus, but it just shows that there is a perhaps abusive power from this individual that needs to be shared. It can be documented, if you go back into the lieutenant's files, if the reprimand was issued, it was an unfair reprimand. The officer is not here to speak on his behalf, and he doesn't know that I'm speaking on this issue. But I do need to share these particular types of issues because this person is up as a candidate for our permanent chief of police position, and I believe that this is actually an indicator of perhaps an abusive power that can actually permeate through his leadership. The other situation, I don't mean to throw the other chief under the bus, but I know from officers who possibly, if you had to open an ombudsman or a way for them to confidentially share these issues, that the other chief, there were officers that not were ordered, but however it was done, were to surveil and to spy on the other chief of police, who was the other candidate. All of this kind of crap, I just don't really feel is right from any candidate that's going to be a potential police chief. Again, I'm trying to speak in smoky terms so that I can give more specifics to our administrative leaders, that's the best I can do right now, but it does need to come forward, and again, it's the Secret Service, it's Romulus Police, Sterling Heights Police Department, Detroit Police Department. Whenever there is a problem with the police department, if they give disclosure, we need to have the same openness, and I'm asking for that transparency. So I will contact both of those leaders that I've mentioned here to see if I can't get a meeting, but I would like to share that those situations do get me concerned.
My name is David Scarborough.
You're supposed to do that.
My name is David Scarborough. I live at two zero four hundred Delaware Street in Red Forest. I'm sure you'll recognize me from coming in and talking about the corruption at the police department and the different levels in your office. I chose to talk more about this because I still see it going on and I still hear it going on. And now my son is an employee of Southfield, so now I have the vested interest. So first, I'd like to thank Mr. Charette for taking the time to contact me and me contact him, and, I mean, seven hours of stuff is a lot of stuff, but yet I haven't seen nothing done about it. I know he's in the process of doing something, but with the corruption and stuff that has gone on, and from what I've seen the other night go on, I feel like we're being put off, we're being hushed up, we're being quieted, and I think the citizens should know what's going on in this city as far as corruption with the police department alleged, alleged pay-to-play contracts, which don't, which a lot of good people have told me is criminal. Mr. Lanty spoke to me and told me that. I agree with you. The one thing that really bothers me is nothing's been done to this contractor, nor do we know if it's been done to the police department. And I think if it was you or I, we wouldn't have a job, we wouldn't have a city contract, we wouldn't have an employee contract, we wouldn't be allowed to work somewhere with some of the stuff that is going on, and is still going on. Of course, they're finding more sneaky ways to do it because it's been brought out by me and several other people. I'll list a couple of things so the citizens know what I'm talking about. We'll start from the top with Officer Schnook that handles the towman. When the contract stuff was going on, he allegedly wasn't there, but I was there, so I know, comes in the back door and feeds always information. Such is lot size, he helped adjust the lot size to fit, and then somehow got a job to pass something saying the lot size worked. But that could be a pay-to-play thing, I don't know. I'm not going to step too far on Officer Schnook. The only thing I can say about him is I know he has accepted free things, free toads, equipment, stuff, because I deliver them. I know for a fact. Okay, let's go to Officer Sacks. Now, here's somebody who's always telling, that when always telling that call got arrested in Detroit, which all may or may not know about, Officer Sacks runs down there and gets him out, and he goes to Corvus to back him up. It was allegedly about a stolen car. I'm not going to go there. I'm sorry?
Time is up.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Before you start with Under, I need you to give your name and address from the record and your timing start when you start speaking.
My name is Ola Takuba Under, also I'm known as Ola Under. My address is two nine six two zero Wildbrook Drive, Southfield. I've come to the council tonight with a heavy heart because about a year ago, I caused an EMS because I was having shortness of breath. I was, they came out, and they mistreated me, and they abused me. I wanted some oxygen, I told them I needed some oxygen, and one of the fellows told me, he asked me, he told me, "Are you trying to tell me my job?" I said, "No, I called it because I'm short of breath, I'd like to have some oxygen." They sat and they talked to each other, and they wasn't sitting, they were standing up, but they were talking to each other. I thought I was dying, the fumes from the EMS truck was coming all up on my face, I already had shortness of breath. They wouldn't give me any oxygen. I made sure that when I came out, I had my driver's license and my insurance card. They treated me just as though I didn't even exist. When I got into the EMS truck, the fumes were all in the back of the truck, I asked for some more oxygen, the fellow just put the thing up to my nose, and he closed the doors, and I really felt like I didn't have any oxygen there, and there was nobody there sitting back there with me. I was so afraid I was going to die. On the way to the hospital, I asked them, "Why didn't you have a service?" Or, and the judge told me that it was the time of the day that they couldn't have done that, time of the day was in the afternoon. And so, I have, since that time, I have asked for records from the city. I was not provided with any records. So I want you to know that I was, was treated in abuse by EMS on May eleventh, twenty-eleven. I have provided you with plenty of information. I have emailed, I sent the information to everyone yesterday. You can review it later if you wish. I have been frustrated in my efforts to obtain information from this city. It seems that I was not taken seriously until I asked to be placed on this meeting's agenda. I would like you to look into the issues I have raised, that are clearly described in my letter on March the second, twenty-twelve. Thank you. Well, yeah, when I was, I had asked them to, I had to wear the neck collar, and I asked the person to go into my house and get my neck collar, and he refused to go into the house. He also tried to, when I went to the emergency room, I asked him to give me my purse, and he grabbed it up in between my legs and asked me, "Is that what you wanted?" And he tried to paint the picture in the emergency room that I was crazy. I am not crazy. I see a psychiatrist, he hasn't diagnosed me as being crazy. I'm a veteran of the United States Navy, I worked on the psych unit. I am not crazy at all. I have been traumatized, and I just moved to this city six years ago, thinking that this was a good city to come to live. But now I don't feel that way anymore, and if I could sit again, I'm afraid to call EMS. I'm afraid what they may do to me. Thank you.
With regard to Mr. Kekos, we will review the situation, however, well, a couple of things. Number one, there's a special occasion where more cars need a social activity or a family function. We will be glad, by request, to issue a permit which would allow parking on the street, and there will not be any violations coming your way. However, with regard to an overall waiver of the ordinance, that would be inappropriate. We do not have the authority or the power to do that. We'll be glad to work with you in any way we can, and it's my understanding that part of the problem is just possibly an unwillingness to jockey some cars back and forth. But if I have wrong information, I apologize, but that's an understanding I was given. So again, we will review the matter, but we cannot waive the ordinance unilaterally. We do not have that authority. With regard to Mr. Gerard Mullin, I want to thank him for his comments with regard to the return envelope, as well as the water gate valve, second item, both items actually will get attention tomorrow. Most appropriately, the water gate valve immediately, and we will look into the envelopes. We appreciate any input to save public dollars. Appreciate that. With regard to Mr. Scarborough's comments, we are reviewing the current contract for towing services. Towing services are really what Mr. Scarborough is focused on. He does know a lot about the field. We've spent several hours listening to his input. We feel it's only fair to listen to the input from all of the functions involved. We are into a deep review of this subject, and we will address any problems in our contract going forward, and we do not participate in some of the items that are indicated in his comments. And last but not least, Ms. Under, I will refrain from certain things that are on the record with regard to these assertions, but what's most important is a couple of things. One, every record that's been requested has been provided, and if we miss a record anywhere of anything, I want to know specifically what it is because we have, there are employees that have been answered, the, I would like to read a letter, an email that I sent yesterday on this matter, and I'd like to read it to the record if I may, to follow up on the whole conversation that I initiated at two P.M. today, which also involved participation by your husband. This is addressed to dear Ms. Under. Purpose of the call was to gain a general understanding of your concern regarding services you received from our fire department. Our fire department's EMS on May eleventh, two thousand and eleven. Your husband expressed the opinion that our emergency personnel did not display the appropriate demeanor in handling the situation. Further indicated that you were both disappointed with the billing and collection problems that followed your emergency transport and hospitalization. And he asserted that the fire department would not provide a copy of their report on the May eleventh, two thousand and one incident. At five forty-five P.M. today, today would be April twenty-second, I left a voicemail message on your phone, and the phone number is indicated, to the effect that the reports that you are seeking from the fire department are available to you, but must be provided directly to you in person in accordance with regulations. If this presents a burden, we will deliver the reports to you at your home as a matter of currency. You will be contacted by the fire department in this regard before noon today, and in fact, you were contacted. Most importantly, I want to assure you for your future comfort that our EMS personnel are among the best-trained and equipped in the region. It has been my privilege to serve as city administrator since November of two thousand and six. In that five-and-a-half-year period, this is the first complaint we have received regarding our EMS services. During that same period, we have received many letters of appreciation from residents, as well as commendation from emergency room physicians, to the effect that our highly-trained and motivated EMS personnel have saved lives and reduced human suffering. However, we strive for continuous improvement, therefore your input is extremely important to us. We will thoroughly review all aspects of this matter, including billing process, communications. Thank you for bringing your concerns to our attention, and this was copied to the E-. And this was copied to the Honorable Mayor and City Council. My next to close, uh, my comments back, Chairperson.
I think Mr. Schratt, um, no, to, to me.
I, I just want to go on the record that, um, we have been in a search for a police chief for a number of months. Um, we hear issues coming to the mind, but I'm really strongly, um, wanting to suggest that the council be more supportive of my being a permanent chief of, uh, police. The mic won't go on louder. We need a permanent chief of police. I don't, this was my, uh, so I strongly encourage the council to move forward. Because the time, we need that humility. And we keep having issues that come up. And until we have that, a credible person in place, I think fears and mis, misrepresentations and, and rumors are gonna continue to, to swirl around in the community. And Mr. Schratt is saying we strongly need to move forward and take a permanent chief of police. Thank you.
Uh, we have an outside plan this weekend, uh, we're coming to the council question.
I have chair. I think the motion will be approved in this report, Jeremy Moss, for the National League of Cities congressional conference, March 22nd, 2012.
Motion, Mr. Schratt, supported by Mr. Patac, for the national league of cities. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Mr. Schratt.
Aye.
Mr. Schratt, please.
I make the motion to be approved in this report for conference, Jeremy Moss, for the National League of Cities congressional conference, March 14th, 2012.
Motion, Mr. Schratt, supported by Mr. Patac, for the national league of cities. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Motion, Mr. Schratt.
I make the motion to be approved in this report for conference, Jeremy Moss, for the National League of Cities congressional conference, March 14th, 2012. The court.
Motion, Mr. Schratt, supported by Mr. Patac, for the national league of cities. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Mr. Schratt, I agree with you on this thing.
I make the motion to be approved in this.
Motion, Mr. Schratt.
I make the motion to be approved in this report for conference, Jeremy Moss, for the National League of Cities congressional conference, March 14th, 2012. The court.
Motion, Mr. Schratt, supported by Mr. Patac, for the national league of cities. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Motion, Mr. Schratt. Mr. Schratt, I agree with you on this thing. Can I please come to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. Go down here. Mr. Moss.
All right, I have, uh, just two items that I want to talk about. On last week, last Tuesday, uh, Mayor Lawrence, Sir Banks, and I participated in Comcast's Hear Day at McIntyre, um, with, uh, handful of third graders there. And we were delighted to be working with them. We packaged meals, uh, through Kids Against Hunger. Uh, and they were, uh, assembled, kind of assembled lines from third graders at McIntyre. I was at the end station feeling, uh, the, the meal packages by Parker Tray, the third grader at McIntyre. Uh, and we actually ended up, uh, contributing to about 2,000 of these bags made. Uh, and each bag contained about 12 full, or six meals. And that's, uh, 12,000 meals that are going to be sent out to families in need, uh, not just in America, not just, you know, in state, but around the world. I think Africa was a major destination where we were packaging, uh, some of our meals. So I just wanted to say that. Uh, thank you to Comcast for sponsoring that and for holding it in our community. It was a great event. Now I'm gonna go, uh, a little off script just because, um, and I, I'm not speaking, you know, I'm from anywhere but the heart. Uh, because there's a lot of, uh, uh, concerns that have been addressed, uh, tonight, uh, to our city. And, uh, just being the new point, or at least the new person at the table, um, over the last four months, you know, I, 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 I kind of getting used to getting beat up a little bit, uh, on Monday nights. Because there are legitimate complaints, uh, legitimate concerns, um, that do need to be addressed. Uh, but it's somebody who, uh, ran a, as a candidate last year, who lived in the city of Polite, um, and now I choose to live in Southfield. This is a damn good city. And our administration is doing a damn good job. And if that's important, because I'm also roots this bright-eyed optimism for what makes Southfield great. And I know that every person up here, we don't agree all the time on policy issues or how to handle the different things. We care about this community. We're not against the citizens, we are the citizens. And a lot of it could be a communication breakdown, but call us, talk to us. Uh, this, I hope it's just a last minute effort when you can't reach us. But we all are accessible at the city clerk's office, that's where our phone number is. We're all accessible, uh, via email. But, uh, there are 72,000 residents of this city. And I'm willing to bet that almost 72,000 people are happy to be Southfield residents. Uh, and I'm one of them. So I want to make that clear. We are a good city. We are a well-run city. I'm passionate about that. I've seen it, uh, in the new pair of eyes for these last five months. Um, and I want to make sure that the residents do know that. And that is on the live meeting. And if you're present in other cities, getting a little frustrated by how beat up Southfield gets these weeks, come to these council meetings. Tell us how much you love Southfield too. Uh, because it's important to hear the good things that we're doing. Because we are a well-run city. We're well-run relative to the cities around us. Um, and I'm proud to be a Southfield resident. And I just want to make sure that's clear. Because i- i- it hurts to hear these stories when people complain, uh, or, or, you know, legitimate complaints against a process by which maybe we made a mistake. But we're human too. And we're willing to correct any mistake that's made. But the city of Southfield is strong and it's a good city over there.
Yep, um, I have three items. Uh, we've had a communication this week, uh, from the Briar Bank Homeowners Association regarding church festival. And, um, I am wondering when this, uh, permit is going to come before council. Um, we're seeing some side about, I think there's legitimate noise playing about the festival. And, um, so I'm asking, uh, if you know what I'm going through right now, when do we express this? Yeah, we've got an email, um, to everyone. Hey, how, um, would you like to talk to me? There's often times, uh, the festival Labor Day, but, um, I know contracts get settled and people make arrangements and publicity. Um, and, um, I recall the complaints from last year. Um, certainly not against the festival, but we need to work with our neighbors to make sure that, uh, they continue to have a quieter on their home. Um, along with, um, what Mr. Moss just said about some good things happening in Southfield. On April 10th, um, the mayor, Mr. Moss, Sir Banks, and myself took part in Revolution Read in the Southfield Pavilion. Um, um, we, along with, um, scores of other, uh, community members, um, and, uh, elected officials, Hobbs and, um, um, Gregory, and Gregory read to about 800 first and kindergarten, uh, children in the pavilion. Everybody got, um, a Clifford's, a Big Red Dove book, and, um, a, a great time was, uh, was had. It's a very successful event. And, uh, you know, we see all this time in the newspaper about the importance of reading. And just yesterday's Free Press, for instance, did a whole feature with David Keith, um, and Al Poman promoting reading, uh, in the city of Detroit. Well, we need readers in Southfield too. And, uh, I'm very glad that we have this initiative. And adults have stepped up to encourage young people to read. It's not all about video games and TV shows. You need, you need to read, um, and build those skills. Um, there's another event, uh, happening, uh, coming up this Saturday. Um, it's the National Volunteer Day Southfield event that's taking place, uh, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is sponsored by the city of Southfield, Southland Public Schools, and Southland Park and Garden Club. And, uh, this year the projects are Stevenson School, Lusher Woods Park, where the Southland High Football Team will be, uh, pretty, uh, leveling out a ton of dirt in low spots in the park. Um, about 50 kids will be showing up at Ingles Park from Southland Laser Pipe School to do cleanups there. And then, um, the Leonard School, uh, property also will have groups of people coming to do cleanups. Uh, the, this event would not be possible without our community partners. And I, I won't mention all 30 of them, but I do want to point out some of the Southland businesses that have, um, stepped up. The Allen Law Group, uh, Computerized Facility Integration, uh, Guardian Alarm Services, Guardian Guard Services, uh, Home Depot of Southfield, Huntington Bank of Southfield, Hubble Rock and Park, uh, the IT Group, um, loads of Southfields, Nexus Net, Orchard Hilton Equipment, uh, Paul's Tree Service, Pizza Populous, the Southfield Sun, Spirit Tech, Target Northland, Tim Hardt's Portons across the street, Winkon Restaurant at, uh, Ten Mile and Southfield. Um, members welcome to attend. The registration is at Stevenson Schools, at 2777 Lusher Woods. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have, uh, starting with Mayor, acknowledge, uh, Mr. Forbes, who is a Southfield corporate, uh, person who has received the Urban Land Institute's highest award, which is a lifetime achievement. Uh, he's been in South, uh, I believe forever. He's got his, uh, recognition, mercy, and, uh, developing high-end laws. Uh, but I'd like to ask too, if the city of Southfield recognizes him and his corporation. And I have, uh, Terry, I have the Crane's article over here. Uh, I'd also like Mayor and his council to get involved with this telegraph though. Uh, they have to meet somebody up there at this stage. It's gonna come down here and that's the situation. This is one of three years, uh, there's no sprinkling system, uh, the landscaping is a challenge. And what they think of this, uh, again, is that we approved the landscaper tonight under this agenda. But I found out that, that Vegas maintained the landscaping in the grass, which is there. The state contract was to repair and make whole those, those islands. And, uh, those business people, they pay an assessment, uh, for the upkeep of the island from I-696 north to the city limits. And, uh, I am just appalled that, uh, that the state has just ignored the city in, in dealing with this. And, and I believe that we really need a strong letter going to them. Mr. Schratt was all was signing it and maybe going up there and showing some of these pictures, which I have, and, and telling them, this is the way that they just do that. That enough that they put asphalt in Southfield and concrete to the north of us. Uh, but now they're not even taking care of their obligation, uh, to repair the vernaculars which they disrupted. And they're sending them to mention the mom's businesses that went out of this is because they, they, they didn't, uh, weren't concerned about the business community as they do their work. Uh, the other thing I just want to mention, and I just to tell them, if they didn't think of it, did they have the cable fixed?
The, the equipment is here, it's being installed. Chair.
Okay, this is it, but I mean.
There's apparently, uh, there are few specialists.
Is the person capable of, of doing the job or should we get rid of them and?
The person's capable, but the person apparently has a whole lot of work. So, we will check on that progress tomorrow.
And realize you get somebody else.
I understand. I understand the frustration.
And it seems like this is gonna happen too long. Uh, and that is, uh, that, that's it. Um, I know that I live on the council porch, I just agree with, uh, Jeremy Moss. I think that, uh, that they're listening to a jury for a long time and, uh, but it's very succinctly, uh, my feelings.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I told my colleague, here you did a great job in really pressing all of our sentiments in terms of concern we have for the city of Southfield. And we won't tolerate the northings we have, cover of corruption and all that other stuff that's been said. We have a great city, we have a great old town. And we, we're here to serve the city of Southfield. We're not here to be beat upon, but we're here to serve the city and keep Southfield a great city. And there are great events happening throughout the community to keep it a great city. One of those events that I'm gonna briefly talk about, and I'm gonna give the website, is iBlueEvent.com. And it's a conference that I'm involved in, helping young girls aged 12 through 18 become women into very successful young ladies. The event is gonna take place on Saturday, May 12th. It's open to the public. Uh, we've got a lot of schools coming to, uh, some choice as well. And I love Southfield, um, getting involved and talk about self-confidence, self-esteem, owning your own business. And just be the best you that you can be. And that's a conference for young girls aged 12, 18 that will take place at 19421 West Ten Mile. And if you look on our website, iBlueEvent.com. Thank you.
I don't, I don't know if I should say anything. I've been around a long time. But I get beat up every day. Every day I get beat up. I take it. I try not to get upset about it. And when I attempt to tell the truth, there's no one there to listen. They have their, on their wavelength, that they're right. They don't realize how tough it is today to be a public official. So, I suppose we have to take it. We can't do this. We have to be careful. But I'm getting to a point where I am going to answer. And I am going to give it. Because, uh, we just can't keep getting beat up. Because we're doing all right. We're doing very well. So I help people understand. And I do talk to a lot of people. And they believe me. And I will continue to do what I do, uh, what I've done for all these years and hope another, you know, I don't know how many more years.
Fifty?
And I'm gonna do it. So, for, I'm beating up people, some people. I'll take it. But I know.
No one else? I just want to make one comment. I had asked at the beginning of this, um, all the comments, want to show that, um, individual staff people not being mean if someone had a complaint. And I'm very disappointed and resent very strongly that our director of communications was accused so viciously and incorrectly by someone who, uh, was chastised by their employer for actions that they took against Mr. Rosenthal. And, um, you know, that's, that's improper to bring that type of accusation against staff people at this meeting. It really is, we, our, our. It really is, we, our staff people work so hard, and they sacrifice so much, and to have people just abused in the public eye is wrong. I don't mind if people want to beat up on me, I'm not much an official, I'm tougher than I look, and I really don't mind. It's ridiculous, and I'm not going to say anything about it, because I have people approach me constantly that I don't even know, telling me how much they appreciate what I do, and the tough job it is, and I'm overwhelmed when people do that. It doesn't happen every day, but it happens enough that I feel it's vindication to know that we are doing a good job, that we have a great city. And then tomorrow, I just want to weigh by the elephant's position tonight, because you really express all of us feel. He's a brand new person, and he lives your all his life, he has a chance to speak everything that goes on inside and out. We have a fabulous staff in the city. Everybody that lives here needs to know how great our city staff, our policemen, our fire, our administration, everyone, all the way down to the low, low level person. We have dedicated staff here that work hard, sacrifice a lot, and I am just very proud to be connected with this family of employees. I feel like they're my family. They're so good, and they're so sacrificing, and they do so much for the people. You have a great city here, you should be proud of it. And if you really are not happy, there are plenty of other places that you might find more staff there, if I just like to look at that.
Next, we have Mayor Jordan, and we have an extensive report from Mayor, let's go ahead, we have time to be...
I give the chair, I'll move the extensive report to Mayor, to US Council members.
I know, she might have some comments to be able, and we decide, we put the extensive report of Mayor, like, to the council, Mayor, and on your meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion necessary. How about Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me, Councilman? Can you hear me?
Hello.
I want to mention, I just wanted to continue the echo of, I serve on the US Council of the Executive Board, and so we need to talk about cities all over the country. Not only that, we have the Southland County Mayor's, we have the Michigan Association of Mayors, which I'm on the board of that as well. And I can tell you that the City of Southfield is looked upon as a very strong city, having many examples of best practices. No city is perfect. Issues that are brought by residents give us an opportunity to correct something if it's not working, and I appreciate that. However, I have the concern that those who aren't satisfied, like it was brought tonight, they don't normally come to the public meetings and speak because they're satisfied. But we also need to know that we need to ensure that our city is open and embracing of concerns that are part of our community, but there has to be a balance that we know that we do have a great city, and we do have very committed, very committed city staff that work hard every day. So we're not perfect. And public comment is part of the rights of our citizens. I just hope and really encourage the public to understand that the City of Southfield has an open door policy, and that our city administrators, the mayor's office, the city council members, are there to hear your concerns. And you always have the right to address the council. And we have a history of being able to work through very difficult times, and I'm telling the city and the residents, we're partners, to continue to work through the challenges we have today. I wanted to highlight some of the things that happened with the law here, between our meetings. There are many things I want to highlight tonight. I was proud to say that we have our code enforcement mayor's roundtable. Many of you know, I've just been mayor, I always have the roundtables to invite the community in, and it was really refreshing because we had brand new residents who had always been in the city a couple months, and came to the roundtable to talk about code enforcement. And I've already mentioned in the city administrators also, that there was an outcry to have a reference manual that new residents could have, and we have a lot of that, and we'll proceed to the best in updating that. So when a new resident comes, through our neighborhood association and our new, we try to block, block club presidents and neighborhood association presidents, can actually knock on the door of the new resident and say, welcome, and these are the codes and standards of the City of Southfield. We have so many things that we have to introduce them to, including our website, what information they can get on there, and our parking rec, and all those different things that come up. I really, and I will be following up on it, ensuring that we are compliant with giving this, because it was refreshing to hear from our residents how much they want that. I also want to say the next mayor's roundtable will be on May eighth, and it will be on public works, the streets, the snowplows, the cutting of trees. And one of the things I do at the mayor's roundtable is that if you have a complaint, you have to give a compliment as well. So therefore, if we don't fix your garbage every night, or we do a darn good job of sweeping the streets for you, then you tell us that. So we want to know what we're doing right, and we also need to know what the challenges are. So I invite people who want to attend the mayor's roundtable, please call two four eight seven nine six five one hundred, and we will have the appropriate people from public works to give you nothing on one road, or be fixed, or status of your own, and things like that, so that we can continue to have open dialogue in our city. I was so proud of Tuesday, April seventeenth, the City of Southfield. We're such a leader in this region, where we open our doors and allow the Veterans Administration to host a veterans' job fair. Many of you know that we have so many veterans that are coming home now, based on the fact that we have ceased our war, foreign wars in some countries, but we're bringing so many veterans home. And when I talk to veterans, I say, what do they need? And they always say, we need a job. And so it was, it was over thirty of vendors there to offer jobs to our veterans, and it was such a welcoming event, and the veterans themselves really welcomed home with this open, just on veterans. So the City of Southfield hopes it, and that's the leadership that we have in Southfield, understanding the need and opening our doors to host this event. Also, something is very exciting, Thursday, April nineteenth, myself and Nancy Banks are clerk, a tendency Habitat for Humanity kickoff event. Now what's so exciting about this is that the Habitat for Humanity, their motto has been that they will build homes, give volunteers to build homes in cities for low-income people to have the American dream of homeownership. But based on our economy and based on the challenges that are in existing homes, we have so many poor close homes, they are coming to the City of Southfield, they have sent about sixty, ten homes, but they're not going to have to build from the ground up, but they can go in and rehab and put families in those homes. It was two of the new homeowners that will give these rehab homes in Southfield that was just established. And I found out that one of the new homeowners mentioned the mayor's roundtable, acted one of the new Habitat, and she said she was going on the door, knocking on doors, introducing herself to her neighbors. She was so excited to be in Southfield. And Habitat for Humanity said the list is so long, with so many people wanting to live in Southfield, and did want to be rehab homes. And her safety bin is a major sponsor, and they were telling me that they had built a home of tanya, and they had finished thirty thousand houses, and it was just a regular home. They said they are taking some amazing homes in Southfield and rehabbing them, and these families are going to get some tremendous, tremendous profits. The good thing about it, when they go on these homes, they're rehabbed, they have to go through education training, they have to go through financial training, they are really coached and monitored and encouraged to become part of the community. And what I've seen from that first family owner, she was just from out, she was knocking on doors, introducing herself, and she's holding a block club meeting in her house to welcome everybody to her new home. So she's doing everything that we should be doing, she's amazing. But that was very exciting. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that as spring is coming, and we have a lot to talk about, up people by yard. This is the time of the year that we really see curb appeal and the investment that we put into our communities. Nothing speaks louder than anyone, whether you live in the city or not, to drive down the community of the street and see blond mannequers, homes painted, and trash not on the street. So I'm encouraging everyone, put your love that you have for this city to work on your piece of the property. Call us, because I call to about property that's not acceptable, one of these homes that we own, do not meet standards. That's totally unacceptable. And we're going to be on our job, sweeping the streets, picking up the garbage, and on the public right away, publicly, work and be doing their part. But we, we can definitely have a good city. The curb appeal, the definition of curb appeal is when you drive through any community, the snapshot you get speaks volumes on what type of city it is, because if it's dirty, if people don't cut their lawn, if there's garbage cans out, and there's no garbage picked up, this is a city where people do not care about their city or their property. And that is not the Southfield case. So I'm encouraging everyone, we'll be having Flower Day again, and that's where we'll bring everybody out, and encourage you to plant flowers, and to beautify your community. I think Councilman Snyder, that was an excellent example. What flowers do you plant? Do you plant what is the sun and what is in the shade, and how do you feed and nurture your plants? So I think we should do that on Table fifteen, and hope some of the best here in the city can be a part of it. When you go to the Bourbon Center, it is just an hour long, the front yard of our city, all of it, is the most beautiful landscape that you can see. So I've been along with it, but we haven't had a meeting in a long time, so that's what happened. So, thank you, everyone.
Ms. Fracassi, is there something left, Chair? Do you have anything?
No, nothing I've heard today, and thank you.
Um, and, Ms. Fracassi? Nothing? Um, the next part, I'm thinking of...
Madam Chair, I'll move the extensive report to Nancy Banks at the Michigan Municipal Building, have the conference, the board.
And Mr. Fracassi, the last, 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 all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion necessary. Mr. Crowe, you have several site plan extensions, would you...
Yes, Madam Chair, the next three items are site plan approval extensions, would you like me to do them individually, or pick one off?
Yes, I'll do them individually.
The first item is a request from Sam Orchun on behalf of London State Church to extend approval of the site plan to the Verden and Streeting Office coming through a tier two southern property located at two eight four one one Northwestern Highway. The site plan was originally approved by City Council on July twenty fourth, two thousand and six, and we're recommending a one-year extension of the site plan approval to April twenty third, two thousand and thirteen.
Madam Chair, move for the extension of site plan, SP one two two five, or...
My data panel?
April twenty third, two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you. Um, also, I have to, I have to, I have to, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion necessary.
The next item before you, Madam Chair, is a request from GP eleven ninety four, SP twelve thirty nine, a request from Heinz Inkers LP to extend approval of special use of site plan, which provided for demolition of a portion of the parking lot for the one Northwestern building located at two eight four one one Northwestern Highway. The special use of site plan was originally approved by City Council on February twenty sixth, two thousand and seven. It is our recommendation that the City Council approves a one-year extension of special use of site plan approval to April twenty third, two thousand and thirteen.
Madam Chair, I move the extension of site plan, eleven ninety four, and, sorry, site plan one two three nine, to the twenty third.
Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Stein, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion necessary.
I have a question on this one. We're looking at doing restaurants and drive-throughs, wouldn't this be a parcel of land that's on Third Drive? It's totally...
I have, for Sam Orchun, a question, a council question.
Something I...
No, I don't agree.
Hi, Mr. Fracassi?
Oh. Where you have only been extended to church? That has only been extended to church?
Yes, pardon, I'm sorry, yes, it is item C, item C, who's the second one? I didn't understand the question, I'm sorry.
You do know that a drive-through restaurant, is it a parcel of land that on Northwestern Highway just south of Twelve Mile and that underdose?
It's, it's on quarter of the, it is all a part of the same property owned by the Heinz people. They manage the, used to be the Wilson Wyeth Building, I think.
Watson Wyeth.
Watson Wyeth. The Heinz people own that. This is across, I think it's Bird Road, or, or that.
Do you have all of that there?
No, it's across from where the Sunshine, Sunrise Cafe was, and there's something else there now. It's all on the Heinz property, and they wanted to develop a combination retail and drive-through facility. They've, they've had a difficult time finding anyone for that, but it, I don't know what else to tell you, except that...
So it's a home, drive-through restaurant?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking, what is that supposed, drive-through restaurant?
It is something like a drive-through Starbucks or coffee shop. It's not a McDonald's, if that's what you...
A chain?
No, not, well, not necessarily, but it would be, you know, a small facility, because that's about, I don't, we did it quite a while ago, it's about six or seven thousand square feet, it's a pretty good sized building, and it's too big for one tenant. It's a combination drive-through, like the coffee shop. I can't, can't think of a particular coffee shop, and possibility of a, an upscale restaurant also, which is really what we had, what they had in mind for the beginning. Because it's on the downtown route for cars on Northwestern Highway, it's ideal for a drive-through coffee facility, and the rest of it would be for, if you recall, when, oh, you weren't here, but when we were doing the Golden Corral, Mr. Fracassi was hoping for an upscale restaurant, and that's what we were hoping for, for this particular site. They just haven't found one. And, but they are very interested in developing it still.
Thank you.
The next item is extension of site plan approval for GP twelve oh six, SP twelve sixty four. It's a request of GP twelve oh six, site plan twelve sixty four, from the property owners, Red, Red...
owners, representing Alex Green, the third and associates, to extend approval of a special use and site plan to convert an existing residential structure to office use with associated parking property located at two three five seven four Southfield Road. The special use and site plan was originally approved by city council on March thirtieth, two thousand and nine. And we are recommending that the council approve a one-year extension of a special use and site plan to April twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen.
Is that a restaurant?
It's, it's a, it's a residential that wants to be, wanted to be converted into office. And they need to add to the square footage the minimum office requirements.
Don't move.
Oh, my, Mr. Fercosi, supported by Mr. Moss, all in favor?
Aye.
Close motion necessary.
I just have one comment, is that okay?
Oh, you're done, I'm sorry. Um, do you represent the, uh...
I am the owner.
Oh, you are?
Yes. Um, it's, it's owned and our business may now come to serve as sole business. Oh, twenty-three, seven, fifty-four, Southfield Road, Loretta Green, green light color without the E. To Mayor Moss, please be staying and to his council. I want to, terrific meeting, I'm glad I didn't miss it. To your Councilman Moss, kudos to your accolades about this city. That's exactly why he invested in this city long before he was born, or thirty-seven years ago. Okay? But I've been, I've been suffering lately with the city of Southfield. Have a brick building on Southfield Road between nine miles and ten miles. It's impeccably kept, looks like a picture out of, out of, of Rockwell, Pennsylvania. And it's been vacant over five years. Cost me a lot of money. And just recently, yesterday, a woman wanted to lease the building. And I told her she doesn't have to, for her business, because it's a zone residential. She didn't, I don't think she believes me. I get about ten to fifteen calls to lease this building. And when I tell them they can't lease it because it's a zone residential and it's on Southfield Road, they don't believe me. I really instructed them to call us in this Southfield, to see why I can't lease it. Because they, they want to lease it for an office and it's an, and it's in impeccable condition. I don't know why they can't lease it. I'm as public, I'm as public as they are. If you would want a building, a man told me yesterday, a realtor, he said, I can't believe the city of Southfield will let this building sit here vacant and not want a small business to locate here. So I can't either. Small businesses are the backbone of our country. I can't believe it either. And I've had to pay taxes for over five years. I've had to, I spent over thirty thousand dollars to make it look good and make it appealing, but I can't lease it. So I'm asking the council, I'm not here, I'm not here fighting like everybody else, I'm here to ask for your help. Would you please give me a provision to let me lease this building as office space while, with, with the one-year extension, while I work on this to increase the size according to the site plan, planner, the city planner? I don't know why I have to increase the size, but I have to adhere to your code or whatever they happen to be because I've had at least a hundred people want to have this. So I'm asking you to please let me lease this building to generate some revenue to help me meet your specifications.
Madam Chair, what exactly is this home located in? In near Mount Vernon?
I have a picture of it, would you like to see it?
Yeah, likewise.
I'd be happy to show it.
Could we get a report on this by next Monday? Let's, let's, did I make a few comments? You have a chair?
Um, this, this is a special use requirement. It requires that the residential being converted to office must be at least twelve hundred square feet. And they're short of two hundred square feet. So when this was approved back in two thousand and nine, it was with the condition that in addition to be added, you need a minimum requirement of twelve hundred square feet. Since that technically hasn't been met, they can't operate as office. We met with Ms. Green and her son to talk about options. And I said that since the site plan had already expired, the first option was to get an extension of the site plan. And then we would meet with the building department to see if they would allow them to occupy it if it's safe while they're adding the addition. So the condition is that we have a minimum requirement at the twelve hundred square feet in order to, to use a residential in an office, as office in this district. They're short of two hundred square feet in addition to the main. There were some other parking site circulation issues. But first step was to get the extension. Now that the extension, if the extension is granted, has been, we can approach the building department to see if they would allow them to occupy it. They technically have a year to comply with site plan condition. So that, that's where we are right now.
It's Southfield, it's, uh, Southfield, uh, Mount Vernon?
This right hall is from the, from AT&T.
Yeah, it's from the church.
Yeah, right, next door.
Oh, yeah, but it's still listed.
I can't either. And nobody, people don't believe me. They think I don't want to rent, rent to them. And they said, I'm sorry, go see the city of Southfield, have to comply.
When was the last time you...
Over five years ago. I don't have the records with me.
As a, as a home, as a resident?
Uh...
I, I remember sitting on a, on a discussion of this, but I don't remember who, who owned it.
It was, my husband was probably here at that time, but it was occupied as a home. And ever since that, those people moved, no, no one else wants to live on Southfield Road.
That's all I need to know.
Yeah.
Can we make a withdrawal on this? Can we make a withdrawal to help, or, because I think we really need to explore what options are available to use.
I appreciate it. Because the taxes...
I don't know if we can be talking tonight, but I would...
I understand.
...come, uh, when we can have a, a discussion.
I'm trying to talk to the board, we already have a term, a term, a...
But it needs to come back.
Well, it will, it's a contract.
Instead of being, uh, it come back and not just...
I agree.
Yes, I need to know when I can lease it because you've received your tax from me
on time for over twenty years. And I mean, I can't even lease my building?
Very much, would they, would they give you any questions?
Uh, would, would, be it back to next, um, meeting, May, May seventh? I think I have a report coming, so...
Right.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to keep you on safety, but I'm, I'm just, um, assuming it with the building officials. And again, this is our, our, our ordinance requires that they make twelve hundred square feet.
No, no, it's, it's, no, it's still zone residential.
Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Right. Madam Chair?
No, 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 no.
I, I can clear it up for you. Oh, forget it, I live right next door. I knew her husband.
Madam Chair, the, the other issue that I'm really hoping to do, allow the occupancy because that would give her the revenue in order to go get there.
It's, yeah.
It is O S. No, it is O S.
Yes. Office, it is, it's a, they said it's not office services.
It is though, O S.
It is.
It was approved on condition that you...
Uh, Ms. Green, Ms. Green, we are going to, we are going to look at this and we will, uh, deal with that, uh, at least by May seventh.
By May seventh?
We'll have the meeting on May seventh.
Oh, okay.
Uh, being on May seventh, we're going to do, we'll do it all.
Please, I, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Okay, uh...
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Crowe, I'm on that, you're next to first. Can you give a brief summary?
Thank you. Um, the next thing before you, council, request special, a special meeting, um, because that's a, a major whole meeting for a Monday, April thirty, at seven o'clock.
Don't move to the board.
Uh, she, 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 she reported on the, 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 the...
I think you heard that something, another enough?
Oh, what's on it? The next one. Sorry, we have a motion for all in favor?
Aye.
Close motion necessary.
And I also like to announce at this time that we have another wonderful event occurring this weekend. Like there's a lot of things happening this Saturday. We have our eleventh annual Shred Day here in the city of Southfield. This is a wonderful partnership between City of Southfield, Iron Mountain, and Southfield Public School. Uh, the event will be held from seven A M. to six P M. in the parking lot at Southfield High School. For those of you who are not aware, where the school is located is at two four six seven five Plaza Road at ten miles. Last year, we serviced over nine hundred and fifty cars. And you are entitled to bring up to two, like, Zerot sponsors, both of documents to be shredded. Or if you haven't ever experienced it before, you can actually bring your box and put it into the truck, watch it go off, and your papers can be shredded right after the car. Um, there is a small charge for anything over a hundred pounds. And I encourage everyone, take them kindly, sleep, go through the house, clean up your papers, put it in your car, and join us at Shred Day, on Saturday.
Okay, uh, we have nothing to schedule. We have a couple more minutes.
The next is November, August, November.
Fifteen ninety?
The next order is November fifteenth ninety, fifteen ninety-one.
I move the adoption of order fifteen ninety. Board.
There was an amendment agenda that was given to council this evening. I'm sorry, it should be up there. Um, I apologize if everyone doesn't have a copy, but, correct, four, seventeen number is fifteen ninety instead of fifteen ninety-one.
And we, I'm, 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 I'm in favor?
Aye.
Close motion necessary.
And I move the adoption of order fifteen ninety-one. Board.
Uh, she, 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 she reported on, uh, no?
Aye.
Close motion necessary. Uh, I'm, 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 I'm,